Welcome, everybody. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, June 4th, meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa. Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Please join me in the salute to the flag. Thank you, everybody. Now, we're going to have open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, and members of the public will be given three minutes apiece to make their comments. If you would like to comment in person, please go ahead and line up at the podium here. And we'll go speaker by speaker, and then we'll take public comment via Zoom. Whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Bob Middlestead, I'm with E-Bike Access. We're dedicated to access for legitimate bikes. Her being the only one who drives bikes like 73s. You're out of frustration. But everybody seems to agree. Super 73s and most of these model bikes are all middle school. Everybody agrees to that. Everybody also agrees that they're very dangerous. Five times the accident rate. So what to do about it? I talked to school boards, they say, "That's up to the police." I talked to the police, they say, "We need a school law enforcement partnership with the bikes being registered at school and then out the illegal ones." When I talk to superintendents, they say, "We'll do it eventually, but the time isn't right. We're going to wait until the fall." I've been at this for six months, and all we get is talk. I was at the Board of Supervisors today saying, "It's time for you all to step in." People pointing to 1878, that's going to have a 16-year. Pass that. You don't, that's a good law. We don't need it for this because these bikes are already illegal. Same thing with e-scooters. There are 10 electric scooters at Hall Middle School. Electric scooters require, under existing law, driver's license or learner's permit, so they're illegal. So what I would ask you all to do is, you know a lot more about local politics and government than I do. I know about e-bikes. Surely, there is a way to bring everybody together and come up with a solution. We've proposed a bike registration. We're willing to work with the schools and police on that. The police are 100% behind this. We just need somebody to take the leadership role here and get something done. Last point. I know that every school is going to have a bike registration program and will ban Super 73s and the other illegal ones eventually. Question is, how many accidents? How many fatalities will it take to get to that point? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll invite the next speaker up to the podium.
I support the past speaker. I'm a voluntary crossing guard. And it is murder to deal with kids on electric bikes. I am very privileged to be in this beautiful hall. I hope you apply for USGBC merit award for the design and the construction of, hopefully, a potentially awarded green building. I'm here on a very distasteful subject. Hundreds of years ago, when a public official lied, they were publicly whipped. This wouldn't be good enough for the two, quote, "gentlemen" that I'm about to cite. Jim Beery, head of the rec center, and his boss have chosen to treat me like a pedophile, like a potential, not potential, treat me as someone who has done harm to an underage child at a dance. He has kept this up for seven months. I have had letters of recommendation. I have given him every possible brief that I could. I've been rather fortunate in life. I've been around the world 19 times with Peter Jennings, who I hired at ABC News. I've been the first PR official at Autodesk. I was the first PR Director of National Plan Parenthood. I've been the first sorry. I was the first managing, I think, managing supervisor, managing editor of Hill &amp; Knowlton, which is the largest PR firm in the world. Immodestly, I've had a fairly decent career. My being treated as a second class, third-class citizen is to me a lie, and it's absolute crap. Again, I've been investigated by the police. The mother of the alleged daughter, not the alleged, but the daughter, who purportedly was molested or treated unfairly. They said, "We can't charge this man. It's ridiculous." Up until last week, there was a dance for
Sir, that's your three minutes. Going to have to ask you to wrap up your comments. Thank you.
In short, I'm submitting a brief. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other folks in public here tonight who would like to speak at open time and give public comment on items not on our agenda? Being none in person, we'll turn to Zoom. Do we have any members of the public attending on Zoom who'd like to speak for open time?
I don't have any hands raised from individuals attending on Zoom. Did receive public comment for open time, and it has been made available to the public and uploaded to the website.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Further speakers, we'll close open time and move on to item three on tonight's agenda, which is presentations. We have some very special presentations tonight. These are proclamations for seven teachers of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District who have served the district for a great many years. Served wonderfully, and so I'm going to just read, if I may, a little shout out to each of our seven teachers here. And then, when we're finished reading out these proclamations, we'd invite you all to come up. You've got little treats and a printed proclamation for each of you as a show of the community's gratitude for your service. So I'm going to begin here. Start with Kathleen, and if, when I read your proclamation, if you wouldn't mind standing so we can honor you, that would be fantastic, and we'll start with Kathleen. Okay, that's okay. So Kathleen has served our community for 16 years as a respected, beloved, and dedicated staff member, serving in different capacities of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District, not least of which was working with multiple literacy specialists. As a classroom aide, she skillfully taught small groups and worked with students needing extra support. Other positions included lunch supervisor and site secretary. We're so grateful to Kathleen for her service. Next is Vincenza. Vincenza has served our community for the last eight years as a respected, beloved, and dedicated staff member serving in different capacities of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District, the last five of which were as a paraprofessional. Thanks so much for your service. Next is Katie. Katie has served our community for 14 and a half years as a respected, beloved, and dedicated staff member of the district office, serving in many capacities of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District as student services specialist, including supporting the Assistant to the Senior Director of Student Services and Technology and the Director of Special Education. Thank you so much. Next is Liza Matthews. Liza has served our community for 31 amazing years as a respected, beloved, and dedicated teacher of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District at Neil Cummins Elementary School. Thank you so much for your service. Next is Mary Ann, who has served our community for 17 and a half years as a respected, beloved, and dedicated staff member of the district office, serving as the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and Board of Trustees, as well as in many other capacities of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District. Thank you for your service. Next is Janet Pollak. Janet has served our community for an amazing 33 years as a respected, beloved, and dedicated teacher of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District at Neil Cummins Elementary School. And I will say, I wasn't lucky enough to have Mrs. Pollak, but my brother was. And finally, we have Lori. Lori has served our community for 20 years as a respected, beloved, and dedicated teacher of the Larkspur Corder Madera School District at Neil Cummins Elementary School, and we thank her for her service. Now, those honorees who are here, we would love to invite you up to come collect your proclamations and your goodies here. Thank you so much.
Must be present to win, I think. Although, maybe we can let you take the, yeah. That would be nice. That would be nice. I would just like to make one comment to these teachers. I have watched you for 30-some years. You have given your heart and your soul and your creativity and your wisdom to the community. I still hear from the kids you taught and the stories they tell about you. So I hope this was a special evening for you. I wish we could make it more and more and more special because we love you. I personally speak for myself and know I speak for the whole community. Thank you.
And with that, we're going to move on to slightly drier business here, namely, the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council or public is welcome to pull an item from the consent calendar from discussion for discussion. Would any members of the council like to pull consent calendar items? Being none, would any members of the public like to pull consent calendar item? And I'll look in person here first, not seeing anyone. Lorena, do we have any hands up on Zoom for consent calendar items?
No hands up on Zoom or emailed comments.
Thank you. So I'll close public comment on the consent calendar and bring the consent calendar back to the council for discussion or a motion. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Vice Mayor, if you, if you could, I'll just, sorry.
I so moved that we pass this consent calendar.
Thank you so much.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to our public hearings, the first of which is item 5A, consideration and possible action to adopt Resolution Number 1824, amending the current fee schedule. And I will turn it over to staff for presentation.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, you'll be considering adopting two new fees related to implementation and processing of Senate Bill 9 applications.
Can we just get a volume check in the back? Can you hear her okay? In the back? It's a little hard.
Okay, I can put the microphone closer. Senate Bill 9 was signed by Governor Newsom in September 2021, and it became effective on January 1st, 2022. Most notably, Senate Bill 9 requires that jurisdiction ministerially review applications for two-unit housing units, which would allow up to two housing units on a parcel. And state law does allow jurisdictions to limit the size of these units to 800 square feet. In addition, a homeowner could opt to split their lot using an urban lot split, and this allows for a one-time subdivision of a parcel into two parcels. Each parcel must be a minimum of 1,200 square feet, and they must be of comparable size. Local agencies can apply objective development standards in the review of these applications. However, any standards that are adopted cannot preclude the development of up to two units on a parcel. And in response to this legislation, the town council adopted an urgency ordinance and later adopted a permanent ordinance to regulate these applications. And at this time, new fees were not adopted. Since January 1st, 2022, the town has received applications for nine urban lot splits. Of these, one application has been withdrawn, and a total of five parcel maps have been recorded in the county. And when a parcel map is recorded, that is when a new legal parcel is created. And the town has not yet received any applications for a two-unit development. However, based on conversations that staff has had with applicants and homeowners, we anticipate we will receive an application in the coming months. This map shows the location of the SB 9 urban lot split application submitted, and this map was included as attachment three to your staff report as well. So staff is proposing two new fees. The first is an urban lot split, and the proposed fee is $5,000 deposit. And the second fee is for a two-unit development, and the proposed application fee is $2,500 deposit. The town's fee schedule currently does have an application for a parcel map, and that fee is $2,500 deposit. And staff has been using this application fee for the processing of the urban lot split applications. The fee schedule does not have a two-unit development fee, which underscores the importance of adopting this fee. And staff is recommending a fee of a deposit of $2,500. And this is based on anticipated time to review projects based on similar projects submitted to the town. And the fees would become effective 60 days after they are adopted. Next slide. So the options before the council this evening. The first is to adopt Resolution Number 1824 to amend the fee schedule, to add new fees for Senate Bill 9 applications. The next would be to adopt the resolution with modifications. Or third, to direct staff to return with additional information and continue the discussion. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
So much, Martha, and we'll start with questions from council members. Do we have any questions? And I'll, we'll start at the left. Questions?
One quick question. So it's being termed as a deposit. Does that mean that if something doesn't quite go through, it doesn't gel, then that money is returned to the applicant?
Correct. So any unspent funds is returned to the applicant? And conversely, if additional funds are required, then additional funds are requested.
So is there any questions? We'll go to Pat and Fred.
Just a quick one. So just the numbers. The minimum lot size after the split is 1,200 square feet?
Correct.
Then you're allowed to put two 800-square-foot ADUs on that 1,200 square feet? That would be like a two-story.
Yes. Theoretically, we, we have not, most of the parcels that have submitted urban lot splits have been for much larger parcels. The smallest was 208 Chapman, which was about a 6,000-square-foot parcel. So we're not seeing anyone with very small lots use this legislation to split their property.
Okay, so it's sort of self-limiting. Yeah, and I had a question about the deposits, too. I was actually wondering, it looks like a doubling of the fee to do a lot split from what it used to be? What is the rationale for that?
It's based on the amount of time that has been spent processing this application. So we looked at all the other urban lot split applications and the amount of the cost to process those applications, and it was, it was based on that. And also, the existing fee schedule was last updated in 2015. So it's likely the parcel map application may increase when we do a fee study in the future as well.
Fred, any questions?
How does a fee compare to other towns and cities?
I didn't look at that. I believe most do deposits. So similar to us, it would be based on the amount of staff time and attorney time to review an application.
Great, thank you. Questions from council members? So we'll open this item up to public comment now. If anybody in person would like to give public comment on this item, please go ahead and head to our podium here. And in the meantime, we'll take public comment via Zoom. So if you're on Zoom and would like to give public comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. Any hands up on Zoom?
We do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see anybody lining up for a public comment here in the chamber. So we'll go ahead and close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. We'll start on the right side. Any thoughts, Fred?
I know, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think it sounds fine. It sounds like you thought it out very well.
Our fees and make sure they are
Excellent, and I agree with my colleagues. I think since it's based on uninformed estimate of staff time, I think it makes perfect sense. I would ask, like, kind of along the lines of Fred's question. I think in general, when we're looking at fees and things, if we could get a quick gut check relative to other cities in Marin, that's always helpful, but this is great. And I would invite council member to make a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Make motion to adopt Resolution Number 182024, amending the current fee schedule by adding a new fee for qualified projects submitted to the town pursuant to Senate Bill 9, including fees for two-unit development and urban lot split applications.
Second.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item 5B, which is the second reading and possible adoption of ordinance Number 1037, which pertains to an increase in the stipend for town council members, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Great, thank you, Mayor Beckman and council members. As you mentioned, this is a second reading of an ordinance that was introduced by the council on May 7th, 2023, in which we had a full discussion about a potential ordinance that would be introduced or that would be enacted to increase the salaries of town council members. Current salaries have been in place for several decades now. I think 24 years or so at $300 a month. State law changed last year, allowing cities such as ours to increase the salary limits for city council members up to $950. That was really with the rationale behind that. That was really to provide more opportunity for a wider range of council member potential applicants to apply for the honor of being a council member and to recognize the amount of work and effort that goes into this role that you all speak in here. So this ordinance would change the monthly salary from $300 to $950 a month. In the staff report, we outline fiscal impact of that, and happy to answer any questions. But again, we had a full discussion of this at the May 7th, 2023, 2024 meeting.
Great, thank you very much, Adam. We'll open this up to council member questions, and we'll start on the right this time.
No questions.
Okay. No questions. And I have no questions either, so we'll open this up for public comment. If you'd like to publicly comment on this item in person, please come ahead, step up to our podium here. We'll also invite members of the public via Zoom who'd like to comment to go ahead and raise their hands. Not seen anyone make their way to the podium here in person. Lorena, do we have any Zoom hands up or emailed public comments?
We do not have either.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for discussion. Anyone have any thoughts they'd like to share? We did discuss this at our, at the second May meeting. Pat?
I just want the audience to know that the main reason why some of us who were hesitant to go along with this ended up going along with it was because we heard that it could make a difference in whether or not somebody would actually run. That if the stipend was enough to make it worthwhile, that maybe some of these young people who are starting to show up at our meetings every once in a while might consider running for office. The last two times, or one of the last times, we had two candidates running totally unopposed. So I think this will help us attract more candidates for, for this job. I'm hoping.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else want to share any thoughts? And I would just second Pat's comments. I think this is a really important initiative, an important step for us to take just from a, you know, equity perspective, right? Being on the town council demands a lot of time, and it's tough for people who need to be working during that time or who need childcare during that time to be able to make ends meet if they're serving on the town council. So I think by, by increasing the stipend, we're hopefully opening the doors to a broader pool of people to be able to, to enter into public service because ultimately, that's what it's all about. So with that, I would go ahead and invite somebody to make a motion.
I'll move. We adopt this second reading, or is it an ordinance? What am I supposed to read? Adopt ordinance Number 1037, amending Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Corder Madera Municipal Code by amending Section 2.08010 of Chapter 2.08 to increase the salaries of town council members. Second.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item 5C, which is a review of the proposed town operating budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and we'll be providing direction to staff. And this is a two-meeting item, and this is the first budget hearing. Welcome, welcome.
Okay. I have, I have
We're still new in this space, so we're figuring out all the kinks here.
I still have a Carnegie here with the, well, we have a company that teaches care of a great deal of the day-to-day business so that Stacy and I could work on the budget. So this year, we were able to use the OpenGov software platform to create the budget. Last year, we created it on spreadsheets, and then we uploaded it to OpenGov, you know, so that we could show it online. And we, of course, have the transparency portal, which we still have, which integrates with our own software, so we can have live data. But this year, we were actually able to create the budget in the software. So, and we did include a few documents that we prepared outside of the software. We've included a hard copy of the budget document in the, in the council agenda packet. And so Stacy is going to be showing and displaying the pages as I review the budget. And I will probably reference the pages on the PDF at times, and then Stacy can display pages on the OpenGov software, which is also on the town website. So the first section of the budget is the general fund, and that's the operating fund for the town. And it's the fund where all of the day-to-day transactions are recorded. And there are a few pages in there that show, on page 12, it shows the various departments within the general fund. And then on page 15,
page ten shows the expenditures by by type and on page fifteen by department. And then also in the budget, there's a detailed explanation of the various types of expenditures. And then there's information about the various types of expenditures beginning on page twenty one. So overall, revenue is expected to increase by about eight hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars in the coming fiscal year, which is a three point seven percent increase compared to the budgeted amount for two thousand twenty three, twenty four. And page seventeen of the PDF shows a detail of all the different kinds of revenue. The main and largest sources of the revenue continue to be property tax and sales tax. And they each account for about one third of the town's revenue. And overall, property taxes are expected to increase.
Do we have a way to record? Geez, these are really, do we have a way to record audio without the microphones? Hello? Fun times. Okay, that's unfortunate. Thank you, Charles. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us. We've still got some audio gremlins to work out here.
Thank you. Okay, so property tax is expected to increase by about three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. And that's based on information from the county. That's an overall increase of four point two percent. And the secured portion, the secured property tax portion is increasing by about four point eight percent, but the overall amount is four point two. Sales tax is expected to increase by about two hundred and three thousand dollars. That's about two point six six percent. And that's based on the estimates from HDL, which is the town sales tax consultant. And that doesn't include the local sales tax, which is in a separate fund, which will be discussed separately. Overall, as I said, the 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 revenue is stable. Those are the largest portions, and that's most of the increase. And just as an aside, staff estimates that in the current year budget, revenue will be about six hundred and twenty six thousand dollars more than the budgeted amount. And that's mainly due to property taxes and business licenses and interest income and ambulance billings being more than expected. In terms of expenditures for the general fund, they are expected to decrease by about two point one million dollars compared to the current years of the budget. And that's mainly because there was a one-time transfer of one point seven million dollars to the town capital fund, which was the result of the previous years unallocated ending balance. And also because the remaining portion of the certificates of participation, which were issued a couple of years ago, have been spent on town hall. So not including those one-time expenditures and transfers, expenditures are increasing by about five hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. So salaries and benefits, which includes police and fire, account for about seventy five, excuse me, seventy percent of the budget. If you look at the actual budget, it looks like salaries and benefits are a much lesser amount, and that's because police and fire services are provided through contracts. The town is a member to JPAs, as you know, for police and fire. And so those salaries are included in outside services. Those are paid by the JPAs. The town employee salaries are increasing by about two hundred and fifty one thousand or five point four percent. This includes a three point five percent increase to the salary schedule as well as scheduled step increases. The three point five percent increase has is just an estimate. It's not been approved. Collective bargaining is currently in progress. And in addition to the three point five percent for salaries, there's also an additional one hundred thousand in a contingency line item. And that could be used for additional expenditures in connection with salaries or with something else as approved by the town council. Each one percent of salary increase and associated benefits for the general fund is approximately fifty three thousand dollars. Retirement benefits are increasing by about four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars or one hundred and thirty percent. And that's due to a payment of five hundred and fifty four thousand dollars that will be required by CalPERS due to unfunded liability. As the council is aware, in twenty twenty one, the town issued pension obligation bonds in the amount of eighteen point eight million dollars, which paid eighty percent of the town's liability at that time. In the current fiscal year, the town did not have to make any payment to CalPERS for unfunded liability because the account had been overfunded due to strong investment returns in the fiscal year ending twenty twenty one. However, as of June thirty, twenty twenty two, which is the most recent actuarial valuation from CalPERS that's available, the town's liability is approximately seven point one million dollars, and that's due to investment losses in the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. And so the town will be required to pay the five hundred and nearly fifty five thousand dollars next year. Additionally, the town's debt service payment will be approximately nine hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. That is, that is to pay for the pension obligation bond debt debt service. And the town will be paying that approximate amount anywhere from that amount up to one point three million dollars a year until twenty forty five. Now, the town does have two million dollars in a council designated pension reserve as well as about three point six five million dollars in a pension stabilization trust. And that trust can only be used for pension expenditures. In terms of other post-employment benefits, the town's OPEB trust contains about five point five eight five million dollars and is seventy three percent funded. And the town's actuary has reported that no payment is actually necessary this year or next year, and that the town could even begin drawing from the trust. So next year, we have not budgeted anything. For the current year, we had budgeted six hundred thousand. We are planning to, although the actuary did say that it was not necessary to make a payment, we are actually planning to send three hundred thousand dollars to the the trust and then possibly next year, although not including the budget at this time, depending on what the unassigned ending balance is, if necessary, you know, we can set another three hundred thousand dollars. The actuary said it's not necessary at this time. So in terms of outside services, the vast majority of outside services consists of police and fire services. And the Central Marin Fire Authority expenditures have increased by about four hundred and eighty six thousand dollars or seven point nine percent. And again, this includes a three point five percent increase to the salary schedule for most employees, except for a small group of employees who how their contract runs through the following fiscal year. Again, this hasn't been agreed to or approved. Negotiations are underway. And there is a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in a contingency line item that was approved by the Fire Council, the Fire Authority's budget that could could be used for for either, you know, additional salary or for other things. A budget revision may be necessary to the town's budget as well as the Fire Authority's, depending on the outcome of collective bargaining. And police services have increased by four point six two percent, a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars, and that includes a new employment contract as well, which is pending. Other contract services, other than those two police and fire items, have decreased slightly in total by about thirty one thousand. And that's mainly due to plans for full staffing in the in the next fiscal year rather than using outside contractors. Capital outlay and town hall construction, that's decreased by nearly a million dollars. And that's that's just because of proceeds of the certificates of participation that were issued years ago have been expended. And transfers out are decreasing by approximately two point three million dollars due to that transfer that I mentioned of one point seven million dollars from the unallocated funding back to fund balance in the previous year to the town capital projects budget. And then in the current year, one point one million dollars was transferred to the equipment fund to pay for cybersecurity in IT needs in association with the new building, town vehicles and other capital equipment. And so for next year, that that transfer is decreased to five hundred thousand dollars. And there's also a seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollar, seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars transfer to the insurance fund. So the bottom line in terms of the operating fund is that revenue will exceed expenditures and transfers out by about seven hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. The town will meet or exceed its twenty percent reserve, which was set by policy. Will continue to have three point six five million dollars in its pension trust account and will have two million dollars additional, that additional pension reserve. And this doesn't, when the calculation of the reserve, the twenty percent reserve does include the fact that there's deficit in Park Madera Center and the Recreation Fund, which will be discussed later. And so that's the operating fund. Did you want me to continue? Did you want me to take questions regarding the general fund or just continue with the other funds?
Do council members have any burning questions about anything that we've, or are we okay to wait until the end of the presentation? Perfect. Okay.
Okay, okay. So the next section is capital funds. And on page forty six of the PDF, the various capital funds are listed, or excuse me, the various planned capital projects are listed along with the the funding sources, which are budgeted. And you will see that some of the larger projects, for example, Paradise Drive Complete Streets, that's planned to be paid for mainly by grants, as is the Central Marin Regional Pathways Project. And in total, and then there are also other smaller grants. But the total capital budget is about sixteen point six million dollars and about nine point four million dollars of that is coming from the local sales tax, the Corte Madera, Corte Madera sales tax. And then the remainder of it are the grant, you know, some grants, some money from Transportation Authority of Marin, the gasoline tax, street impact fees, Measure A parks. So some of the main points of the main points of the capital budget include the Capital Improvement Fund, which is shown on page forty seven and forty eight. And there are grants in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the Hart Street Connector, two hundred thousand dollars for Echo Path Connector, just over four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for Casa Buena Complete Streets, one point five million dollars for Central Marin Regional Pathways Project, and about two million dollars for Paradise Complete Streets. Page forty nine and fifty, the cap, this is the largest portion of the capital fund. It's the Corte Madera Sales Tax Fund. And it does include some other items which are not associated with capital projects, but of the approximately ten point, nearly seven million dollar budget, about nine point four million dollars of that are for capital projects. The other items in that fund include three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for youth and senior projects, and eighty thousand of that is for salaries. And then also about four hundred and seventy one thousand or is the approximate, is the payment for the certificates of participation that were issued, partially financed the construction of town hall, and then there are some disaster preparedness, mainly fire related items. But at the beginning of the current fiscal year, the beginning balance of this fund was approximately eight point four million dollars. And this was accumulated over several years with the intent on spending the money on capital, infrastructure, road projects, flood control, disaster preparedness, senior and youth projects and other items approved by the council. So we are, if if this budget is approved, these capital projects and other items, as I said, total nearly ten point seven million dollars. So that will bring the balance in that fund at the end of next fiscal year down to essentially the two point five million dollar reserve. Other funds included in the the capital fund, Measure A Parks Fund on page fifty one, and that's where the town's share of Measure A Parks tax is deposited. In the current year, the Measure A funds helped to pay for the town park restroom. And in the next year, we'll pay for town pickleball courts. And then we have the Town Capital Projects on page fifty six. And that was a fund that was established in the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. And this, and the source of the funding has basically been the unallocated fund balance, part, you know, portions of it or large portions of the unallocated ending fund balance in the fiscal years since twenty twenty. And since the inception of this fund, the the town has transferred approximately six point seven million dollars to this fund from the general fund, and nearly all of it has been spent on town hall construction. Next year, six hundred thousand dollars, which is still in the fund, is going to be paid, is be paid, helping to pay for the Tamil Pius Overcrossing Project with the remainder of that project being paid for, well, not the remainder of the project, but the remainder of the town chair of the project being paid for by the sales tax fund. And then two hundred thousand dollars from that same fund, the Town Capital Projects Fund, will go towards park deficiencies improvements. In terms of other funds, the Equipment and Technology Fund and the Insurance Fund are funded by the General Fund. These funds do appear as part of the General Fund on the financial statements, but they're separated on the town's books for tracking purposes. And the Equipment and Technology Fund is shown on page fifty eight. And the current year fiscal budget, as I mentioned, included a one point one million dollar transfer to that fund to pay for furnishings for the new building, cybersecurity, alarms and security system, vehicles, including a street sweeper and a vacuum truck, a generator that had to be replaced and tables for the recreation center. In the next year, the budget includes a five hundred thousand dollar transfer from the General Fund to pay for new town vehicles for public works and additional computer and technology needs, digitization of town records, lease payments for an electric vehicle and additional cybersecurity. The vacuum truck and street sweeper were not purchased in the current fiscal year, so those budget items carried over. The Insurance Fund is shown on page fifty nine. A transfer of seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars is included to pay for workers' compensation and property and liability claims and premiums. Page sixty, the Recreation Fund begins there. And the there's information about the budget beginning there. And then the budget itself begins on page sixty four. I'll mention that this budget anticipated a operating deficit of three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. However, after the budget was developed, changes were made by recreation staff where it will actually result in a deficit of less than two hundred thousand dollars. These changes will be made when the budget is revised, and the changes were mainly as additional revenue for sports programs. And all of the programs are listed. Most of the programs, such as sports, camps, enrichment and childcare, are self-supporting, and they bring in more revenue than they, than there are expenses related to those those programs. However, operations and administrative expenses, such as building maintenance, salaries for the director and various staff members and utilities, those items don't generate revenue. The final fund I'll mention is Park Madera Center, which was established to keep track of the amounts that the General Fund has paid in connection with the purchase of that shopping center. Over the past few years, rental income has been sufficient to pay for the debt service. The ending balance next year is estimated to be a deficit of approximately one point three four million dollars. The deficit has been decreasing little by little, but it's still there. And then the last item that is in the packet, I had. And then the last item that is in the packet, I had, um, a brief, uh, twenty twenty five, twenty six projection. Which is at the back of the, the, um, the packet and you'll see that revenue is expected to exceed, uh, rev, uh, excuse me. Yes, revenue is expected to exceed expenditures by about two hundred and seventy one thousand, as opposed to seven hundred and fifty nine thousand in the current year. And that's the result of expenditures growing at a faster rate than the revenue. Notably unfunded liability payments for CalPERS salaries, which, um, in the preview, in the next year are increased by five percent. Three point five for, for, uh, adjustment to the salary schedule and one point five for step increases again. The, those have not been, um, approved, but it's just a placeholder. Police and fire services are each increased by six percent. Um, the insurance transfer is increased by ten percent. So, um, in that next fiscal year, revenue is expected to increase by three point four percent and expenditures and transfers. By five point five percent. Um, and again, that's just an estimate. All of the, um, assumptions related to those items are included in the package. That's my presentation. I'm going to try to answer questions if I can.
Great. Thank you very much, Daria and Stacy and Donna. We're going to take questions from council members now. We'll start left and move our way down.
For the insurance fund, is that a, is that, is that the, the one that we?
Yes, yes.
Is that an abnormal, is that caused by something or is that just, uh, like an increase in the total?
The increases in insurance in general is just increasing. This is, uh, the town belongs to. A risk management pool and, um, the, um, you know, they try, they share costs. The premiums, um, actually were actually decreased a little bit this year, but mainly due to the fact of. That Bay Cities changed the way that they were, um, calculating the premiums. But, um, and, but claims did increase. So I think it's, I don't think there was any particular incident within the town. That caused it.
That's based on overall claims within the pool, and so that could actually increase or decrease at each budget.
Right, right. Yes, that's correct.
And then the other question I had was for the, uh, electric, uh, sorry, for the vehicle fund for the engineering and stuff. Do we still qualify for, and is it, they can't be electrified and we can get grant funds for fleet, or are we going to do that and this is? Portion that we owe of that.
EV, uh, Lightning, uh, F-150. And the other one I believe is not. Um, and I think there, again, we're just, we're being. Making sure we're aligning our vehicle purchases with the carb rules and whatnot. So I think, and I can't speak specifically to the rebates and whatnot.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, this is all in for us if we have to purchase it and then we will get the rebates or any kind of grant funding after the purchase. And so we have to self-fund first.
Yes, the grant, there's no grant included.
There could, no grant provided.
I mean, not included here. I know Phoebe is working on them and that.
Okay, sounds good. We'll come down, we'll go to Pat.
I just have, uh, one question, um, for right now, and that is. On the, the tax override funds where you have the three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for senior and youth programs. Would it be possible to separate those out?
Yes, I think.
Cause there's been some.
Yes.
Questions about that that I haven't been able to answer.
Yes, on page, let me just find the page number here. Okay, on page fifty of the, um, of the PDF. At the bottom where it says sales tax override expenditures by department, you'll see, uh, senior programs, two hundred and eighty five thousand. And then enrichment, it's, we could, we were unable to change the name in this, in the system, but that's the youth programs where it says. Scholarship. Enrichment, it's, um, ninety thousand, um, the, the scholarship program, I, we have eighty thousand dollars. Let's see, on, if you look on. Revenue. We don't have. Yeah, but, but there's eighty thousand dollars, yes, included for that, for the scholarships, yes.
That's all for now. Okay, Fred.
Can you just briefly describe the process for the budget?
The, the process of the budget, um, sure. I usually start by, um, getting the estimates from HDL. I usually start with the revenue. I start with getting the revenue from HDL for the sales tax. I contact the county about the property tax regarding other taxes, uh, or these such as. Business license or, or other smaller things. I usually, unless there's something that I, you know, I know is going to happen, I usually. Look at the trends and see what's happening, you know, in order to project that revenue. Um, a major, usually the, before we even do the town budget, we usually do. The fire budget, because that's a large component and that has to be adopted first, so we do that. Go through that and that is adopted. We get the police budget, which is prepared by Larkspur staff. The Bay Cities budget, um, determines the amount of the, the insurance fund. I reach out to all of the department heads. Um, I send them their current budget. And ask, and, and not staffing, I mean, not people's salaries, they can't do anything about that, but you know, asking them, is this staffing still the same? Here is your current budget, here is your current, your to date expenditures. Um, can you tell me what sort of changes you're anticipating? Are you anticipating any other purchases? Um, of course, uh, the salaries are a major part of the budget, so we have. We don't have a position control within our software, so we keep that on spreadsheets. And we have every employee listed, every position listed with their current salary and. Their anticipated salary if they do a step increase. We get the, uh, based on the actuarial reports from PERS, we're, we're given the PERS rates. We usually have to make an estimate for the, um, health insurance rates because we never have them in time for the budget. Those increase as of January first each year. So those, we just have to make an estimate based on talking to people, based on, you know, prior years. So we just have to make an estimate for that. Um, we have the actuarial reports from PERS, which determine if there's an unfunded liability. Payment that is due. We, um, we have, um, the OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Actuarial. Study which determines what kind of transfer is necessary to that fund. You know, after getting the input, as I said, this, I'm talking about the general fund right now mainly, not only, but mainly. After getting that input, for, um, you know, I consult with the town manager. We make adjustments, you know, people have, and then, you know, I ask people if they're going to be, you know, making major purchases, mainly the public works director. You know, for vehicles and that sort of thing. I work closely with, um, the public works director regarding the capital, um, the capital, uh, budget. He gives me a list of the projects he's, um, he's planning. I look at the funding that's available. He tells me what grants. He's anticipating getting, you know, we may have to make adjustments based on, you know, what the result of that is. If, you know, we have enough money, we have to make adjustments. Um, in terms of recreation. Um, we, um, I work with, obviously, of course, with recreation staff because I don't have much knowledge of what their programs are planning. Um, you know, we have a couple of meetings a year, one or two with the, the finance committee to get their input. You know, they were the ones who gave input about the, the reserves. So, and then, does that answer your question? I mean, I mean, the mechanical.
No, no, that's fine.
Care about, but that's like how we plan the budget, yeah.
Okay, thanks. I have more, but I didn't buy page numbers because it was easier for me.
Okay.
So question on the org chart under Park and Rec, there's two recreation supervisors. One, it looks like there's about like five or six people reporting it, and the other one doesn't have anybody reporting to them. Do you know why that is? I assume they're making approximately the same salary.
I'm not sure. I know one of the recreation supervisors, if I'm not mistaken, is in charge of facilities. And the other one is in charge of, is, well, I think she just started or.
Start shortly, it will be a program.
It will be in programs. So I think the program person has, um, more regular staff. And the other person, the facility person, has a lot of, um, like intermittent and part-time staff.
Okay, okay, because that's only showing one part-time person. It says has needed.
Yeah, part-time is, there's only, yeah, oh, yes, that's correct.
Has needed, so it's almost like there's nobody reporting to them.
It's facility attendant, yeah, part-time facility.
Yeah, there's, there's several part-time people, but they're not regular employees. I think that's why they're not included here. But we could include, we could count them up and, you know.
No, just, I just.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Um, and just to clarify, central room, please, I know it says JPA on there. Most people may not understand what that means from the public. But, and there's a direct line to our town manager. Those, the chiefs do not report to our town manager, correct, directly?
I think that they, they report to all of the town managers, don't they?
No, it's a management committee.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, because it's just showing a straight line, that's what I'm asking. You're gonna have to bear with me because I printed this out.
Okay.
I don't know if you're going to be changing the font. Um, I had a hard time reading it. On page six, and this goes back to, um, I think sales tax override, climate act, act, application, we're giving two hundred and fifty thousand. Do you know what that money is going to be used for?
Yes, let me look at that budget.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi RJ.
Hi there. Merrick C says, so that is, um, a line item identified for. Either a local match, if we are successful in getting a FEMA grant for the Marina Village burn project. Or if we are unsuccessful with that FEMA grant, um, the idea is to use it to start some of that work, um, with that amount of money.
I would just add, this is, goes to how we need to make some assumptions about moving forward. We're obviously going out with a survey here. Near term, we've talked a lot about this project. Certainly staff feels like it's an important one that we move forward with. But ultimately, we're going to bring that back to the council later this summer and talk about really the expenditure of funds with all the information we've received. From our community members out there in Marina Village. So, um, but, but that's important to recognize that, that's that we wanted to reserve some fun, funding for that.
Okay, and then why, RJ, while you're here, and again, I apologize, I don't recognize the term, multi-modal transportation, like four million three?
Multi-modal, I think multi-modal transportation is like transportation in general and multi-modal means it includes car, pedestrian, bike.
Okay, okay.
All, all modes of transit.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have that, or I think that's the one here. Yeah, so that's just, um, yeah, all modes of transit and some of those types of projects. Add up to four point three.
Okay, thanks. And then park and recreation, two hundred and thirty thousand, that money's for. Again, I'm just trying to get, understand where, we're budgeting money, where, where it's going, what it's going for.
For the two, the two hundred and thirty thousand that's coming from the sales tax fund, yes, thirty five thousand is for enhanced sports turf maintenance project. Twenty five thousand dollars is for tree inventory and assessment, a hundred thousand dollars for miscellaneous parks improvements. Seventy thousand dollars for east field renovation.
And so that east field renovation is to begin design work for the potentially new turf field in the east field?
It's what, in that, that was coming from the work plan conversation about exploring opportunities, so I think the, the plan there is to really just. Actually go into a, explore what, some, on the design side, what it would take. And then we'll have some information about what it would take to actually build that out. I will also say on, 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 sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
But on the sales side, for parks, other expenditures, if this is where. Sort of anticipating the question of the full totality of, of funding for parks projects as well should include, also includes two hundred thousand dollars. From the capital, town capital projects fund for our park deficiencies, which is what we discussed in terms of. Actually making sure that we're tackling those master plan items on a yearly basis. And so that's just coming from a different source. Not necessarily the sales tax fund.
Okay, thanks. And that's what, yeah, that, that's what I was trying to get at. If there's excess money over, like we did last year, then we budgeted four hundred thousand for parks. So we keep that, the master plan moving, especially on the deficiency side. And then up fire prevention disaster preparedness, there's two thirty two. How does that break down?
Well, I know off the top of my head that we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, um. Work that the fire department may have to do on behalf of the town, if the town doesn't have the staff to do it. We have weed abatement in there and we have about ninety thousand dollars in there for, um. The match that we make to the Measure C Fund, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. So that Larkspur and Corte Madera are each, um, giving a, an equal amount. Because Larkspur contributes to a larger amount because it's a parcel tax and they have more parcels. So in order that we're, um, making an equal amount, we, the town of Corte Madera. I don't know the exact amount, I think it's ninety four thousand dollars next year, so that, it's almost all for fire, it's all for fire services.
Thanks. Um, again, I'm just gonna move along here. Page fifteen, there's a line item, it's called building. It's an increase of two hundred and seventy five thousand from estimated, went from seven, seven, six to million fifty one. It just says building. These are popping out to me, by the way, because of larger increases.
Mind Stacy pulling up the, um, you know, the pie chart of, of the building department? I, oh, okay, I, well, actually, I, I do know what this is. It's because. A, for one thing, um, the, the Community Development Director in the current fiscal year was charged to planning. And now she's being split between planning and building. Also, um, it has to do with the fact that we've now hired a building official. Which, um, we didn't have for a large portion of the year. Um, so tho, those are the major. And then also an additional, um, permit tech is being hired. And, and also, um, well, they're planning to, I don't think he's been hired yet, or she has been hired yet, an additional, um, plans examiner. That position has been vacant.
Thanks. And the maintenance public works, the same thing, it's increased like two, almost three hundred thousand.
Yes, that's, that's also along the same lines of, um, part of it is, um. Is, you know, the salary increase, of course, um, three point five, five percent plus step increases. And then also there was, the senior engineer position was vacant for more than half of the year. So that's, that's mainly why.
And then, um, can you?
I have an additional clarification with that. So for the building director or the, um, the inspector or the, and the permit officials. We had been sending that money outside to a third party, uh, and now that we're going to keep it, does that offset? And so therefore, but it's captured somewhere else in the budget currently?
Yeah, we, while we lower the consulting costs as a result of actually hiring on, so you'll see there is some decrease in those consulting costs as well. And these have been sort of the positions that have just been vacant in the past. So your, the actuals, the last couple of years for those. Departments, as Daria mentioned, were lower. We were doing part-time, um, you know, work with consultants and paying them through that. Basically on, on that line item. Um, and there's been some transition now with new staff. But it's really, you know, filling those vacancies. We still have some vacancies, so we'll have to, you know, hopefully we'll be fully staffed in those departments. Going forward at both public works and, you know, development, which has been the goal. And I think, um, we'll really, um, especially with opening up new permit center. Trying to really make sure that we're providing the best service we can with the, with the new facility.
She starts tomorrow, does she start tomorrow?
There you go. Starting tomorrow, so good timing with the opening of our permit center for sure. Thank you, Fred.
Page eighteen, ambulance charges from budget to estimate for twenty three, twenty four, they jumped like four hundred thousand?
Yes, um.
And, and I'm sorry, and then one follow-up question. We're also picking up over a million dollars in revenue from ambulance charges?
Yes, that's true. That's always difficult to anticipate the exact amount. Just depends on, you know, how many people need ambulance services. So, yes, based on the amount that we have received this year to date, it's already exceeded the budgeted amount. So that's why I increased the estimated amount.
Page twenty-one, county council. There's a line item here, other services. It was like estimated sixty-five thousand, budgeted eighty-five for this year. Do you know what we spent that money on? Sixty-five for this year?
I can look on Open Gov, let's see.
In this year, I think we're, a good portion of it is actually for the subcommittee. We came in, I think it was April or May, with the request for approval of about thirty-two thousand for the art subcommittee. That was gonna go on the, that's gonna go on the walls in the lobby, so that was part of the, that was coming out of the discretionary fund.
Yeah, that's the bulk of it, the, the total council discretionary fund estimated amount is fifty-seven thousand dollars.
And so, and then there was the consultant services, that's part of that.
As, that's part of that, yes. That includes, that includes that, yes.
We do some regular contributions from that practice.
Yeah, there's, yeah, other ones, we, yeah, to like the town band, sixty-five hundred dollars, and to Redwood High School graduation night, those sorts of things also come out of the, the council discretionary fund. And then, and then other six thousand dollars, or five thousand dollars for, you know, the services to broadcast public meetings.
On page thirty-two, field, field maintenance. Looks like the number of employees are down, but salaries are up. And if I average out salaries, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand a person. There's ten employees, total benefits are like a million two.
I'm sorry, you're asking about the salaries on?
Page, yeah, I'm, I'm on page thirty-two for public works maintenance.
Okay, you're asking, yes.
If I just take the number of employees and divide it by total salary benefits, the average salary is like a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's probably correct, it, because this, this includes the superintendent of public works. It includes the assistant superintendent of public works. It includes all of the maintenance workers and the, I think he's called mechanic, including those who work for the sanitary district because the sanitary district does not have any employees of its own and does pay the town. So that seems like an accurate amount, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, including, including benefits. Benefits can be, can be, I mean, well, well, the salaries, well, no, this doesn't include salaries. That's just the salaries, the benefits are further down, but.
Right, that's what I mean, if I just take the million two.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that does seem, that seems correct.
With the mechanic and stuff, is that one of those special employees that was, had a different classification than some of the others?
The equipment mechanic is, is sort of a unique position in the town, just, but, I mean, other cities certainly, towns certainly have an equipment mechanic. But, other than that, yeah, other than that, I think, certainly, there's, we're actually, you know, moved certifications, and that's an important position, certainly, to keep our investments in our vehicles and make sure those are, we're getting the longest lifespan we can out of those, for sure. So it is a specialized skill on that.
Yeah, if I can jump in there, it's definitely a position that's been filled for a long time. Although, the last couple of years, we've been filling it, aside from last year, with some maintenance workers who showed a skill in that and then had addressed it through a temporary out-of-class pay. But historically, it's, it's been filled, Jim Ravina, who you may know, worked here for, I think, twenty-plus years in that position. And it's not just vehicles, it's fixing mowers and basically everything, generators and all sorts of things. So, yeah, very, very important role.
And I also think what's affecting the average of these salaries, as I said, is there's, you know, the superintendent position and two assistant superintendents, you know, which, who are paid at a higher rate. And I don't think the average maintenance worker makes a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but these other three positions are paid at a higher rate.
Two other questions in the same category, I want to say. It says leave buyout, eighteen thousand, what was that for? And then there's also other services for six hundred and thirty-two thousand.
So, well, I'm sorry, what was the eighteen thousand?
Leave buyout.
Oh, leave buyout, yes. That's, we had two maintenance workers leave employment with the town and we were, the town was required to pay out their accrued leave. That's what leave buyout is. And then other.
Other services is like six hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Yes, outside services, that is.
Yes, some of that can be, so with our pump stations, we often hire a company, Tesco, that does reports every six months and they do their own testing on things. We have a couple other maintenance contracts that do similar things. So that's where those would be.
That also includes, it includes about ninety-three thousand dollars for traffic signals, eighty thousand dollars for streetlights, fifty-five thousand dollars for tree work. Contract personnel, which are the landscapers who, you know, landscape all over, do a lot of work, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. That's the contract with Flores. Eighty thousand dollars for storm drain and flood control services. And then there's various other things, like these coverage permits and, you know, small amounts for hiring expenses.
I'm gonna skip down to park and rec, which is like sixty-four. I'm wrapping up in a few minutes. Thank you for bearing with me. Again, I read this stuff and I get into the numbers. Two things on that, one is outside, outside services, looks like it's increasing two hundred and seventy-six thousand. And the second part, if I'm reading this right, supplies are budgeted for like two hundred and twenty thousand, which is like eighteen thousand a month, plus or minus.
So this is the, the overall budget.
Correct.
Yes. So a, a lot of those are for various, various programs. So if we look, thirty-eight thousand dollars of supplies is for sports. Seven thousand for enrichment. I think childcare, which it's not broken down, childcare, there's a, a really large amount of supplies. Maybe we could look on this year's Open Gov.
It just seemed like a lot again, because it averages about eighteen thousand a month in supplies.
Childcare really has a lot of supply, you know, that are necessary for the childcare program. I think a lot of that has to do with that.
I just have one more for you. Page sixty-four on facility rentals. If I have this right, we run a deficit there of like about forty grand. Basically, it looks like whatever we're bringing in on rental doesn't even cover the cost of the employee.
Yes.
Expenses we have.
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks. Okay, thanks, again, thanks for bearing with me.
Thank you, Fred. Rosa, did you have any questions that you wanted to ask?
I think I kind of have, present to a lot of these. But I, I guess it's more of a, sort of a wondering about the future. Just looking at the deficit, that, the upper limit deficit of recognition. How sustainable is it going forward to be subsidized by the general fund? Is, is there something we should be looking at about, in terms of fees? You know, anything we should be concerned about?
Do you want to answer about the fees? I think, aren't they working on a fee schedule?
Well, we do, yes, and, and, well, the, the facility rentals are reviewed every year. Programs are on a different schedule. And certainly, that's something that I think this separation of the rec fund into a separate fund is a tool that can help us sort of inform how we're giving in terms of recovering costs that we may be spending in that, that area of our budget. So it, it can help us inform whether we need to take another look at fees and, and do we have the right structure if we're, if we're falling behind and, and seeing a deficit pile up year after year. I mean, we have discussed, well, you know, potentially, when we get to the mid-year budget revision and we're looking at twenty-three, twenty-four unallocated funds, do we use that then to sort of address the park and rec budget, at least for this current fiscal year that you're seeing? But it is something certainly to track going forward. And I think it's sort of, can't look at it necessarily separate apart from the entire budget as a whole. Because I think, at the end of the day, as you, as you said, you know, the general fund ultimately is going to have to cover those costs one way or the other, whether it's this year or we continue to have it, that's, that's over a couple of years. That's, that's something that we do need to watch and make sure that is being addressed, just like the other funds that you see.
Thank you.
I should have to tell you all of that. One thing on the rentals, to me, it's the fees, but the other thing is, how are we marketing the community center? To get people coming in to rent it? Because we can up the fees all we want to, but if we're not marketing that building and it's not, it's underutilized from a rental standpoint, then we're not bringing in income.
Thank you, everyone. I have only one question, it gets more of a request than a question. I think we've heard this before, but if we could just, on these, on these sheets where we're, where we see the columns of the twenty-twenty-three actuals, twenty-three, twenty-four revised, twenty-three, twenty-four estimated, and then twenty-four, twenty-five proposed, if we could get a fifth column with percent change between the proposed budget and, I don't know if we want to compare it to the previous budget or the previous actual, but I think some per, some, a, a column of like percent change for us would be helpful.
Okay, we'll try that with Open Gov, I think we tried that, but, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll try it again, yeah.
If it's budgeting software, I'm confident that there's a way to get a percent change. So that would be really helpful. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
If I can, I, I also just want to acknowledge the team, our finance team, really. This was a difficult budget year, it was hitting right at the same time.
Right.
We were actually transitioning, making the move into this building, so we had some off days there. We also are, obviously, we talked about this, but in the middle, middle of budget negotiation. So a lot of numbers were changing during the last two months and trying to estimate that. We had a lot of department heads who are also dealing with other priorities as well and trying to make sure that we're focused on bringing to you the best budget we could for the next fiscal year. So I just don't want to recognize the, the many, many hours of work that Daria and Stacy and Donna all made to put this together. So thank you.
That's a great point, Adam, and thank you to our finance team. We really appreciate the work here that you've, you've put in to, to put together this very robust budget. So if there are no other questions from council members, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the proposed budget to public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item in person, please go ahead and make your way to the podium here. And we will also invite members of the public who are tuning in via Zoom and have any questions or comments, to go ahead and raise their hand via Zoom and we'll bring them online to be heard. Not seeing anyone you'd like to speak, please, please come to the podium, thank you.
Of course, all these numbers and everything fly past my ears. I'm just a lowly taxpayer and I'm an artist. And I'm proud to say that Disneyland, which functions very well, was created by artists. They have people mover, everything works in Disneyland. We've all been there, we've all seen it work. It's theatrical and it's practical. My objection is I don't feel there's real representation to the taxpayer. I want somebody to say, how can we cut fees for the taxpayer? I witnessed the other day, workers in the field taking an extra-long lunch period. No one was standing over them, and I was thinking, how much are we paying these guys? Anyway, there isn't time, three minutes, not enough to say all I have to say. So I would like to suggest that the council and staff open up the discussion of the huge tax that they're gonna impose upon homeowners, to private citizens, and we form a roundtable and see if we could mitigate the cost. And then I have one question to ask. Have any of you, because it's, to me, it's very obvious, thought of putting a huge chunk of money in the bank and have that huge chunk of money work, interest-wise, for the taxpayer, so that we can meet the cost of this sewer project, which is gonna break the back of a lot of people. A lot of middle-class and lower-class income people in this town. I would like to suggest that we form, we have talented citizens that aren't on the board here that would come forward and think of ways that we can save money rather than bear this backbreaking tax that you intend to impose upon the taxpayer. Now, I heard of benefits for all the town, five, five percent increase and in the retirement package and, and all this, but I never hear what we can do for the taxpayer. I would love a committee just to say, we're here to watch where we can cut costs. That, that's the kind of government I would like to see. I'm not accusing you of any wrongdoing, I think, I just, it's not your personal money. I don't know that it's being as carefully watched as I, the taxpayer, like to see a watch. I don't have to facilitate a legal, legal, to put it any other way, but I just wonder if we could have a committee that, to your interest, is cutting costs for the tax, that's it. Especially the middle class, who are paying for the people on the healthcare, you know, people that need.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other folks here in public, in, in person tonight who would like to make public comment? And I'm not seeing any. Lorena, do we have any hands up on Zoom or emailed public comments?
No hands raised on Zoom and no emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So seeing no further public comment, we're gonna close public comment on this item and bring the proposed budget back to council for discussion and direction to staff. Yeah, sure, Pat, why don't you start us off?
Thank you. I, in order to do my homework here, because I'm not really a budget person, I interviewed two of the finance committee members and also talked to that former council member who said to me, he looked over the whole thing, and he said, what you should say tonight is a big thank you to the prior town council for putting those great pension bonds in place, for really setting things up so that now the big job of the finance committee was, so where should we increase the reserves? What kind of reserves should we be increasing? And that's just a wonderful problem to have. And we're blessed because of the sales tax, obviously, but we are also blessed for, for Bob Ravazio and the other people who ran the town and created this beautiful building. And now we all get to step in and act like, we, I mean, some of us were here. But, anyway, so that's my big comment, is that we, we are here in a very good position financially to be able to say that as long as things continue with retail activity in Corder Madera, we'll continue to have a nice bit of money coming in every year that we can decide how we want to spend it or whether we just want to save it. You know, we will, there are decisions that we can make for, moving forward, that will be substantial for the town. And on, just on the subject of parks and rec, while we're talking about this, we have discussed this many times. The council has come to an agreement many times that it's the responsibility of the town to serve those who are underserved and to make sure that in this time of increasing wealth inequality, that we are making our programs and, and activities at the community center affordable for all of our residents. And so that cost recovery, which we're looking at, the citizens' tax override, that's part of that money I was asking about before. You know, I think we need to continue to do that, and if we really don't want to do that anymore, we should have the conversation. But it keeps coming up, and it's like, we already talked about that and we, we made the decision. And I, and I hope we can sort of somehow formalize that commitment so that we don't have to keep not coming up with it. And the only other thing I want to say is, RJ, I don't know if you're still on, but does everyone realize that, that four million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand and seven hundred and forty-six hundred and forty-six dollars, that's the amount of money that came to us through grants that I think were largely written and, and presented by RJ? So that guy, in terms of rainmaker, breadwinner, he wins. Thank you, RJ, and thank you, Daria, and your team. Great work.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, let's go down here.
I just want to say thank you to the team that put it together. I am sure that it's, your eyes kind of cross after a while, so looking at all those numbers, but we always break them down so that anyone can understand them, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with what everyone else said, but I also are on larger boards, you know, that represent Corder Madera to the other twenty-two municipalities, and I can tell you, it's, it's also talking with them, the struggles that council has, and we're probably one of the most fiscally, like, well-off and conservative, and we, we're really good at what we do, the staff, you know, and we get to basically accept how good our staff is every time, and it's really a privilege. So I think-
And we never gloat.
Well, no, we, my, my thing is, is I've seen others really struggle with, with, when, when they're faced with much harder decisions, you know, trying to represent the public, and so it's really a blessing here, and it's very difficult in most communities to understand how you can invest a lot of the monies that they do have. I do like that we continually push for good grants and building infrastructure. In general, I, I felt like my time on the council, there's been a real push of understanding how to bring services, to pay for themselves, and, you know, the, the idea of, like, putting money in the bank, like, we have those discussions almost every year of all the different obligations and outlays that the town will be facing for the next twenty years, and we've been paying down incredible amounts of money to be able to, to basically reduce the cost in the long term, and we're only starting to see that benefit. But in our strategic plan and other things where we set that up, you know, in the budget, kind of expectations as a policy, we also have discussions about when we should rein it in and understand how far we can, you know, push out and, and that type of thing, right? And I think that, you know, there has been discussion that a little bit of fiscal responsibility and conservatism, now that we've gotten to where we are, might be nice and let it settle in, right? Feel like it'll continue to flow in at the same rates that we've seen over time. But based on all that feedback, I see it still going down the trajectory that we've all agreed upon and talked as a, as a community about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Fred?
I want to thank staff also, because I know this is a household, I probably gave you guys a lot of questions, but you were well-prepared, so I appreciate that. I do have changes. On the OR chart under, where it says JPA, please footnote JPA so people understand that. It's fire, police, but again, they're not directly reporting to us. When I went through this document, to me, this is a financial document. That's, it's a budget. There's about sixteen pages, or twenty-five percent of it is accomplishments, changes, goals, and work plan. I think you need to go through and clean that stuff up, because I can't tell what's accomplishments, what's changes, what's goals, what's the work plan? I can't tell. There's one department here that says the goals are, there's about eight goals, they all say continue. Five of those are from two thousand and twenty-one. I think you need to go through those, please go through those and clean them up. And again, I just, I, I admire staff, our staff works very hard, but I think when you start throwing everything in the kitchen sink in, I think it diminishes the hard work that they're doing. And again, it's twenty-five percent of the document, to me, it's a financial document. Legal fees, legal fees went from like two hundred and fifty-two thousand up to three hundred and thirty, I think a couple of years ago. I think we did that because of the housing element. We're back to three thirty, I'm not sure why. I want to see those cut back down to three, three hundred thousand. If you need more money on for legal fees, you can come back to us. One side note on that, we need to manage the budget and not manage to the numbers. So even though there's, there's money sitting there, and that's for any of these line items, just because there's money sitting there doesn't mean we should be spending the money if we can avoid it. So again, I think that needs to be cut down. For Central Marin Police and Central Marin Fire-
Can, can you explain why you think that needs to be cut down? And can we hear from Adam Wolf why it is a set at three hundred and thirty thousand?
I'm happy to talk to that, and, and one of the things that, and a lot of this goes back to the discussions we had throughout the course of the year. We had specifically discussions at our strategic work plan about how to essentially cut out a lot of our ordinances, do ordinance work, clean up our code. You've seen several ordinances and, and come before you. Ordinance work, I will just say, and it's not just the cleanups, I mean, we have, you've seen many, many ordinances come before you. We're getting better ordinances because we use our legal services for that, very effective reviews of codes. And so I, I do think it's really important to invest in that. We've seen the results of that, I think, in some of the more recent standalone work that Amy and her team have done. So, you know, I respect the, the comment, certainly, about managing the budget and our costs. We did also, if you recall, the council approved an increase, slight increase in the fees associated that we were paying, which, by the way, were, were, were very well-deserved, but also they were low and hadn't been looked at since, since sometimes. So I think those are contributing to a little bit of the increase in costs. I will say comparably to other, probably to other jurisdictions, even those of our size, I think we're actually doing quite well from a legal cost.
Mayor, honorable council members, Amy Ackerman, Town Attorney, Councilmember Kassissa, I'm always willing to discuss the legal work that our PLG does for the town of Corder Madera. I'd be happy to meet with you, go over the bills, but in this day of increasing complexity, running a town requires skillful legal services. We have, this year, been involved representing Corder Madera in lawsuits and settlements of lawsuits. We have undertaken certain personnel investigations that were required to occur. We can't plan for that. We can't plan on employee conduct that requires investigations under the law. We have a legislature that is churning out law after law, changing housing element law, changing code enforcement law, changing housing requirement law. This requires your attorney and assistant town attorney to review these laws, prepare a memorandum for council members, for staff. We keep you up to date on legal changes, and all of this is time that it takes. I think you will not find most towns represented by two extremely experienced, i.e. old attorneys, who are incredibly efficient in providing our legal services. I can also tell you quite candidly, you are my lowest-paying client by far, and that is a source of frustration for some of my partners, but you are a very valued client and, but I'm happy to go over any of the legal expenses with you. We had a rate fee hearing this year. The legal requirements under Prop two eighteen are extremely complex, required a great deal of legal work on that. I think this is, the amount of time I put on sanitary district work this year was, it's much higher than in prior years.
Okay. So do you feel comfortable with three hundred? You want to leave it at the three thirty, and then make sure you manage your legal fees? Because again, it's all billable hours. It's up to you. I'll leave it up to you.
Well, I-
I think, Fred, before you just give him that, I think we also need to hear from the rest of the council, because that's not a unilateral move.
Right.
Okay.
Fred, I'm going to let you finish your comments, and then, and then I'd like to speak.
Central Marin Police and Central Marin Fire, please make sure you footnote, because we have their goals in there and accomplishments, but we don't have anything to do with, I want to say their work plans, because their work plans are done by the councils. And I think on Central Marin Police, you have a link to their budget, but there's not a link to the Central Marin Fire budget. Park and Rec, how much are we giving them for deficiencies this year total?
The park deficiency fund, two hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
I would leave it up, again, come back to council for discussion. If we can up that to three or four hundred, we had four hundred last year. I think we need to start working those deficiencies down. If we just sit here in two hundred thousand a year, I don't know how much that's going to get. But again, if we can bring that back to council-
Some of those are also addressed in the capital budget, correct?
Correct. So the, the, last year, what we did was two hundred thousand for deficiencies, which were going to be essentially the public works, going through the list from the master plan and knocking those out, and then we also had two hundred thousand dollars that was more for the improvements that were sort of, more of the, knocking out some of the pickleball and the, and the other things. I think some of it's carrying over into this next fiscal year, but we also have capital improvement projects in the capital budget that are meant to address more than deficiencies, the actual improvements.
Okay, so the two hundred's enough if we take that plus what's in the capital improvements?
Yeah.
Just two last things. One thing is, at some point in time, if we maybe want to think about having a discussion, again, I'll leave it up to council, I think we have a twenty percent reserve now about thinking about increasing that to twenty-five percent, or leave it where it's twenty, but we're targeting twenty-five. Again, it's just for future discussion. And just the last thing is, the supplemental, the informational budget, is that, it's a separate document, but is that actually attached to this budget? It is? Okay. Okay, thanks. And that's the only, that worries me. I'm glad we're doing that now, because I just, everybody says we're always flush with money, but again, it's like anything else, there's a change in the economy, and that can go south in a minute. And then just one last thing, just check for typos in here. On page sixty-three in one of these paragraphs, there's an off-the-cuff statement that I do not think belongs there. It's really off the cuff. I think it was put in by mistake. It's like the third paragraph from the, from the bottom. It begins, one three-quarter recreation initiative managers, older adults, and it says, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Fred. But everybody's spoken once, right?
Yeah. But I, I will want to-
Yeah, we'll come back. I, I just wanted to say, so first, general comments. The town remains in a strong position. This is a robust budget, and I, I really want to, again, thank our staff and our finance committee. Corder Madera is in a very good position. I would not, there, there's no city in Marin that I would rather be on the council of for a lot of reasons, but our, our, our financial position is absolutely one of them, and that is a result in large part of decisions that this council and previous council have made, but we could not do it without our staff supporting us. So thank you very much for, for helping us, helping us put ourselves in the position that we're in here, which is a position that residents get to enjoy through a robust offering of services, through good infrastructure, you know, through all the things that make this a fantastic place to live. I definitely second Charles's comment. I think part of the reason that we're in such a good position is because we always have one eye to the future in Corder Madera, right? We're always, even in the flushes of times, I think we're always kind of waiting for that other shoe to drop. You know, I think we were early movers among Marin cities on, on actually establishing a twenty percent reserve here, on fully funding that reserve. You know, now that we're talking about potentially increasing the reserve as well, I think that's a sensible thing to do, even in the position that we're in. It doesn't mean that we, you know, take our hands off the wheel and just kind of coast. It, it means that we're, we want to actually further work to consolidate and protect the town's position. So I'm really glad to see those discussions starting here. The last thing I'll say, just kind of generally, is going through the budget, I really appreciate how the spending that's laid out here, none of this is shoot from the hip. This is all informed by, by feedback from residents, whether it's through surveys, whether it's through public workshops, it's informed by really thoughtfully done master plans, whether it's the Parks and Rec master plan, whether it's the, you know, storm drainage master plan, but we actually take the time to forecast, you know, five, ten, even sometimes twenty years out into the future, to make sure that we have a sense of what our spending is going to be like going forward, and what we're going to be spending it on, and to make sure that that spending is aligned with what residents are telling us they want us to spend their money. So, so I feel really good about that, and I, I just, you know, again, want to thank staff for, for another strong budget here. With regards to some of the prior comments, I'm always for cleaning up and tightening up, but I will say, as a matter of principle, I think the narratives are really helpful. And I think that actually, if I recall, I think that came out of a prior discussion we had where a, a budget that is one hundred percent numbers, maybe that's the most budgety of budgets, but it's not the most accessible of budgets for people like me who do not come from a finance background, and I think we want our budget to be something that is readily accessible to members of the public, regardless of what their comfort level is with budgets or organizational finance or anything like that. So I really appreciate, actually, that, that we've got these narratives here, you know, tracking on changes, tracking on what's different. I did notice, I asked for, for percent earlier, and I did notice that you often put percent in the narrative, so I appreciate that. But, but I think the narratives are a really helpful tool here. I will just say, I think, I think that I'm not comfortable with the idea of us giving direction up here, saying, hey, this line item, I want you to take it down, you know, X dollar amount to, to this number that I have just presented to you. And this is not a knock on Fred, but I just, I, I don't feel comfortable with us sort of putting on a staff hat that we don't really wear, because we, as council members, don't have that depth of sort of organizational knowledge, right? We don't, we, we're not that under the hood, we're not that in the weeds, and so I think to say, for example, hey, take that three hundred and thirty thousand dollar legal budget and cut it down to three hundred K. Well, where's that coming from? What is, what is the thirty K that's being proposed to cut, and why do you feel that that is, that that thirty K is funding something that's not worthwhile? I'll also note, just from the perspective of our time as council members, staff's time being here tonight, the public that are here in person and, and on the meeting, I, I don't know that there's much of a value in quibbling over thirty thousand dollars. This is a forty million dollar agency, thirty thousand dollars is zero point zero seven five percent of our budget. So I think if there's concerns from council members, you know, about line items in this sort of ballpark, I think all concerns are valid, and obviously, I think we, we can and, we, we should be, and we do track every dollar, but I think, I, I would like to see us just be a little bit cognizant of the discussions that we're elevating to the council level that take everybody's time, and the discussions that we can maybe have, or questions that we could ask offline, one-on-one with staff or, or with the entire finance team if necessary. I, I, I think that's, that's important. And lastly, I'll just say, I have full faith in staff's ability to manage every dollar in this budget. I think the, the proof is in the pudding. I think your track record speaks for itself. I have never felt that we have had money in the town's budget that was not adequately managed or was not spent how it was intended to be spent, or was spent simply because we had it. And I think honestly, I think our surpluses are, are proof of that, right? We're not going out and looking for ways to spend money. We don't have money burning a hole in our pocket, right? If we have money left over that we, you know, that we didn't end up spending, we put it in a reserve, we invest it, we put it in a reserve, or we come to the council and discuss what we want to use it for, if anything. So I, I, you know, I, I feel really good, frankly, about this budget. I feel really good about the trajectory that we're on, both financially and in terms of management. So those are my feelings, and I'm, I'm happy to support this budget, you know, as, as, as presented. Turn it over to Charles, because I know he wanted to speak as well.
Yeah, so, I mean, I've, I've known Adam since he was leading the planning commission, right? And I know he really respects well-written and executable ordinances and, and rules and regulations that are, are clear and easy to, to enforce and everything, and that is an investment, and so I'd like to give him the budget that allows him to do that for the town. And that, and to me, that's a policy decision, it's not actually a, a, a quantity of monies, right? It's whatever he needs, given the, the general kind of work plan for that year, that's what he needs. And then the other one is, you know, we have talked about going to the reserves. I talked to Mill Valley about it, they have a thirty percent already, and, you know, so twenty-five is, you know, as far as our peers, right? Like, I think it's, it's good. But, you know, that's one thing, with those kind of larger, where we invest our monies for the long-term liabilities, we, I'm, I'm used to a little bit more backup from the finance committee and others about if that is the right place where we'll get the most payback on the money and give us the most fiscal surety in the long run versus other things like open, whatever, right? Like, and, and so I, I guess I would just like to understand why that one versus others and aggregates and like, you know, where we're going to get the best payback on money, or if it's risk, right? And it's about making sure that the parks run the year that we don't have enough money, right? Versus putting more money into the parks fund that year. Just having, like, to me, that's, it, once again, a policy decision, and to your point, I'm also not a financial with- And to your point, I'm also not a financial whiz, but we have some really brilliant people that I've seen in the past and on that committee that can help with that, right? And so, I don't know, Adam, I mean, has this number and that kind of thing gone through those members?
And I'm happy to speak briefly to that. I mean, one of the things I really worked on and tried to do, with all of Daria's help on every step of the way, but starting even last year, but mostly starting with the strategic work plan and strategic planning session that we had with council is to dig in and show where we're going. It was at the recommendation of some council members, but also a finance committee. And we sort of looked not only at this fiscal year, we started to look at five-year projections. We reviewed those with our, not only with the council, the strategic planning session, but also at the capital side of things. We went to finance committee and sales tax override committee and talked about the longer-term projections. And then also got feedback certainly at the mid-year budget about where to invest funds to get the most bang for our buck, so to speak, on some allocated funds that we had in the prior fiscal year. So now we went through that process. And those monies are now accruing interest in CDs on the ladder for the next couple of years with fairly solid interest rates. So it's a cycle of feedback and we laid it out there and having those discussions. And I think we should give credit to our finance committee members to help us through those discussions and our sales tax oversight committee members as well. Watching the capital budget and where we're putting those funds. And so it's something that I know we're focused on and trying to work through and looking at all angles, so to speak, of this budget. So, and that will continue. I appreciated all the conversations and feedback we've gotten from all of them.
Thank you for reminding me of the total process and all those groups and minds that are involved with the decision-making that goes into it. So, I mean, when you hear that, that's why it's much easier for me to accept it in its entirety without line item modifications, right? And why I would start feeling a little anxious about making those types of moves because it is a much larger kind of fiscal organism than at the individual.
That feedback loop will continue and I think will help us as we, yeah, every year is going to be different and we're going to be tracking it.
But I'm excited to listen to it.
Any other closing thoughts from council members or any other direction that folks want to give to staff? Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. I don't think we need a motion.
We'll come back at the next meeting.
Okay, great. All right, so that was item 5C. We're going to move on to item 6A here. So item 6A, our only business item of the night is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 192024, which is scheduling a general municipal election for November 5th for two council seats. And I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So as you are all aware, the terms for council seats currently filled by council member Casissa and council member Lee expire upon the certification of the results of the upcoming November 5th election. In order to fill those seats, the voters of Corder Madera have to vote to fill those vacancies and it would be at that November 5th election. We have to do a consolidation of the election and sections 10002 and 10418 of the elections code require that the council request the county board of supervisors to permit the county elections official to render specified services relating to the conduct of the election on a reimbursable basis. So basically, the county of Marin has the resources to conduct the election for all of the special districts and municipalities within the county. And they would basically do all of the work involved in consolidating the town's local municipal election with the upcoming November 5th general election. And we would do that through adopting a resolution that includes details on the consolidation and also information as to the filing period for individuals who choose to run for office and the extended period if incumbents don't file and et cetera and more. There's additional details in there. And for the fiscal impact related to that, the county elections department, assistant town manager Rebecca Vaughn worked on this and contacted the county to determine the fiscal impact. They estimate that the cost for participation in the general election be between $1.75 and $3 per registered voter. And we currently have 7,088 registered voters as of May 31st, 2024. So using those numbers, we think the potential cost for the election to range between $12,404 and $21,264. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you would like me to answer. The recommendation is that you adopt the resolution so that we could do the consolidation, have the board of supervisors take action and direct the county elections department to have the election included.
Great. Thank you very much. So we'll open this up for council member questions. Any questions? No questions, no questions. Okay, no questions here either. So we'll open this up for public comment. Any member of the public who'd like to comment on this item, please head up to the podium if you're with us in person or raise your hand on Zoom. If you are on Zoom, not seeing anyone, head to our podium here. Do we have any hands up on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom, no email comment for this item.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment on this item and bring this back to the council for a motion. Any thoughts on this procedural resolution or does anybody want to make a motion?
Is the money in the budget?
The money is in the budget. Daria has spoken.
As long as I don't have to read the whole thing.
No, $20,000, I believe I put in.
Oh, we could be 1,100 bucks short. I'll go ahead, as long as I don't have to read the whole thing. I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution number 19/2024 regarding the election on November 5th, 2024.
I'll second.
Council member Casissa?
Yes.
Council member Lee?
Yes.
Council member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. That concludes our business items for tonight. So we're going to move on to item seven, which is council reports. And we'll start with the town manager.
Thank you. So I'd just like to start with informing the council, we actually have moved. We are in the building. We opened to the public yesterday, is it? So we have now, we are now issuing building permits and other sorts of public works, entitlement permits and whatnot out of our new permit center, which is very exciting. So staff, you know, we've had, it was really actually worthwhile to not be fully open to the public last week. There was a lot of moving parts and pieces and getting acclimated to the new building. You can see we're still working out some of the kinks with audio visual and other things here and there as you use the building. But that's extremely exciting. Couple other dates with that. I'm sure maybe council member Vazio can elaborate, but we're trying to work on a grand opening. July 2nd is the date that we're set, we've set. And so we'll be sending out some messaging on that. And then lastly, I would just, I will say, there's a lot of other things that we're trying to get in place and in order for that grand opening. It comes along with just commemorating the occasion, the building, the accomplishment. And so we'll continue to work on those things. One other, I think, really exciting thing to note that it's been flown a little bit under the radar. On June 20th, SMART is going to be having a ribbon cutting for a microtransit shuttle that will be running from the Larkspur SMART station to our shopping centers.
It's the last mile?
It's sort of the last mile. It was actually originally intended from ridership. Folks wanted to get to the Larkspur ferry and it's not that far, but it's, and SMART, I think, also got feedback from the ridership that they would also, folks would also like to get to the town center in the village. So I think that's extremely exciting. I don't have all the details yet, but we're looking into that further, but.
Could you please email us those details?
Absolutely. As soon as we get them, we'll email them and, but I think that's a real positive development. That's all I have to report.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll move on to council reports and we'll start with Fred.
5:22, I attended the MCCMC monthly meeting. 5:28, again, Ross Valley Paramedic Authority Subcommittee. Again, we're doing part of that Subcommittee, doing a deployment study for the paramedic service. There's a little hiccup with some of the information from the sheriff department, but Chief Weber was working that out with them. And then yesterday on Monday, I attended a Marin Transit Board meeting and the budget got approved. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Charles?
I attended TAM as the alternate where they presented the yearly report and gave out the crossing guard of the year award, which was really sentimental. And they also talked about that bus element. And then also talked about finishing the bike path extension from the Corder Madera Creek over by Trader Joe's, right? So I think that's going to, I think it might have already soft opened, but, so that's exciting. Yeah, and that's what I have to report on.
Excellent, thank you. And thanks for covering TAM for us. Rosa?
Okay, yesterday I attended Marin Healthy Youth meeting. Some interesting things that they're doing is there's, they have a youth group. And what they're trying to do is in West Marin, they want to increase the low price of cigarettes, basically to raise them out of the reach of young people. And it's remarkable, the work that we're seeing these, you know, high schoolers doing. Also yesterday, I attended Twin Cities Disaster Committee. The focus was to get energies to be focused more toward earthquakes at the moment. In addition, they're more focused on fire and flood. And they're bringing in speakers to talk to us about property insurance as well. That is a big topic in California right now. And then on 6/22, I attended the MCCMC monthly meeting at the AC Hotel in Santa Fel, which was fantastic and had two great speakers. Regional Vice President of PG&E and Jamila Jordan, who it would be great to have her come talk to us. Her topic was planning budgets through, with an equity lens. And she was really, really entertaining and interesting. And then on 6/28, I attended the Central Marin NRG Timely Topics, which was all about earthquakes with Ross Stein, really, really excellent speaker. My fellow council members were there too. One of the really interesting things is that there's a, he wants to see us update construction codes that preserve not only human life, but preserve the integrity of the buildings so that buildings don't fall down in an earthquake, which helps communities get back on their feet faster and adds only 2% to construction cost. And he had a little demonstration for us as well, which was really interesting. And then, oh, that's it. Onto the sewer.
All righty. Thank you very much. Madam Vice Mayor.
I officiated the first meeting in the new town hall while Eli was on vacation in Europe. That was really fun. I also attended the MCCMC meeting and everyone got something very different out of it. And for me, it was meeting Derek Johnson, who is the new executive director of Marin County, taking Matthew Heimels' place. And he seems great. He's from Slow. They're quite progressive and he's really into excellence in design. So he's going to try to whip TAM and some of the members, he didn't say whip into shape. That's my own wishful thinking. But he was really awesome and I'm excited about him being there. Former city planner, yeah, the best. As Adam mentioned, July 2nd, I think it's going to be from 5 until 8. That's normally a council meeting that night. So we'll cancel our council meeting and instead there'll be the new artwork on the walls, some live music, appetizers. We're calling it Taste of Corder Madera, getting some of the best restaurants to serve up some nice finger foods, some sweet treats and a ribbon cutting. We're going to do a ribbon cutting by the mayor and manager. And then the only other real highlight of my whole summer is June 13th on Thursday. RJ Sukoe is speaking to the Lions Club about how to engineer a more livable city. And if any of the staff wants to come, just let me know. I think I can get you some, you know, discounts on dinner. Dinner's only 15 bucks and it's always a really great dinner, but I'm happy. It'd be nice to have someone from staff and the council, you know? Okay, that's it.
Great, thank you. My reports are all old because I missed the second May meeting. So they're from between the first and second May meetings. May 9th, attended the Chamber of Commerce auction. I think I saw all of my, like, almost all of my council colleagues there and some good staff representation. So it was a fantastic event. May 13th, had a CMSA, Central Marin Sanitation Agency Finance Committee meeting. Just one thing that I want to report on that, the, what is it? The State Water Resources Control Board, I think, recently basically passed a new regulation saying that now all wastewater agencies that discharge water into the bay are responsible for removing various new types of nutrients from their wastewater. These are the nutrients that are responsible for these big algae blooms that we've been seeing. As, you know, as the world heats up, as the bay heats up, nutrients are reacting with this warmer water and causing these huge algae blooms that result in massive fish kills. So that's, those are the events when we've been seeing, you know, reading about like millions of fish washing up on the beach all along, you know, our shores and things like that. So the water, the Water Resources Board is basically trying to address this problem. They're imposing this requirement to reduce or remove nutrients from our wastewater. That's going to cost an insane amount of money and we don't even really have the sense of how much it's going to cost yet. But it's going to cost millions of dollars just to do the study to figure out what the order of magnitude of the, basically the new infrastructure that we're going to have to build to accomplish that nutrient removal. So I don't often report back with like concrete stuff from CMSA, but this was a big one. So I just wanted to put this on folks radar and let everyone know that I'm available. And Jason Dow, the general manager of CMSA is available if any of us want to learn more about this. I've got one other CMSA item that I'll touch on for SD2 report. But I also on May 14th had a regular CMSA meeting. And then on May 17th, attended the ribbon cutting of the North South Greenway project that Charles mentioned. So that was the new kind of connector from the bike and pedestrian bridge over Corder Madera Creek that lets off basically right in front of like that Shinology car wash over there. So that was good. We're slowly kind of closing the gap and all eyes are starting to turn to Corder Madera in terms of our little bit that runs behind Trader Joe's and cost plus there. But we're moving forward with gap closure there. And that is all I've got to report. So with that, we will close council reports. Item eight, do we have any comments on our draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, we'll go ahead and adjourn the town council meeting.